You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners Court Meeting. Commissioners Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 24th through Wednesday, December 25th in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Escatep Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th, beginning from 6:00 p.m. and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the New Year's holiday. All county offices will reopen on January 2nd, 2020.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. The Roden Bridge-Fabians Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabian Street in Fabians, Texas, 79838. The Roden Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas, 79938.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners Court Meetings. Commissioners Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
Today is Monday, December 16, 2019. Commissioners Court is meeting in regular open session. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation from Pam Ferroni.
The flag of the United States of America and the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Almighty God, we thank you for the privilege of coming before you this morning. We thank you for your goodness, your mercy, the wonder of this time of year. We thank you for the sense of brotherhood and peace that we experience at this time of year. Oh, I thank you that you have given us every gift that we need to make this a wonderful life on this earth. Lord, I thank you that every good and perfect gift comes from above and that at this time we celebrate the gift of your Son. I pray that you would help all of us, each one of us, to rally around the special sense of peace and unity and love that we experience at this time of year of El Paso, our beloved El Paso, past, present, and future. Right now, we're thinking of before August 3rd and after August 3rd. I thank you that you are healing this city and that you are restoring us and that you will raise us up to be the El Paso Strong, we proclaim. And Lord, I pray for 2020 that you would give us clear vision in the new year. Clear vision to walk closely with you, clear vision to be what each of us are supposed to be in this community, to make it a better place to live. I ask you to touch everyone who comes before this court today. May they experience your presence and your peace. May our leaders in this court today know that you are leading and guiding them, and may all business be resolved in a way that is pleasing and helpful to everyone. We thank you that this year, though it's coming to a close, we are excited about the prospects of what will happen in El Paso in 2020. We thank you and we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Ferroni.
Well, welcome to Commissioners Court. Caesar, we're ready to move forward.
Thank you. Item number four is the Consent Agenda composed of items 4A through 4Z. Are there any items that members of the Court of the public would like to pull for individual discussion?
Commissioners?
Caesar, was there not some items that were deleted?
Not from the Consent Agenda, sir.
Okay, thank you. Motion to move.
Commissioner Perez is absent. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout? Commissioner Robinson is absent. Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Item number 5A, Resolutions. Approve and adopt a resolution declaring Saturday, December 21st, 2019 as the Greater El Paso All-Star Football Showcase Day in El Paso County, Texas.
Mr. Flotis? Thank you. I'll read the resolution and then we'll give us your comments as well. Okay, thank you. Whereas the 28th Greater El Paso All-Star Football Showcase is scheduled for Saturday, December 21st, 2019, at UTEP Sun Bowl Stadium. And whereas the Greater El Paso All-Star Football Showcase will showcase El Paso County High School seniors who excel in football, sports, medicine, cheerleading, dance, drill team, marching band, choir, sports media, and JROTC. And whereas the Greater El Paso All-Star Football Showcase establishes a foundation for a better future through the spirit of competition, higher education, leadership, citizenship, community service, and their quest for excellence. And whereas the Greater El Paso All-Star Football Showcase offers these students an opportunity for college scholarships. And whereas the Greater El Paso Football Showcase has awarded scholarships totaling $574,000 over the past 28 years to area high school seniors. And the showcase combined over the last eight years has awarded 200 student-athlete scholarships totaling $1.7 million. Now therefore, be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court do hereby declare Sunday, I'm sorry, Saturday, December 24th, 2019 as Greater El Paso All-Star Football Showcase Day. Signed the 16th day of December, 2019.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson is absent. Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Flotis?
Good morning, Judge Samaniego and City Commissioners. My name is Brian Flotis and I'm a representative for the Greater El Paso Football Showcase and also a current UTEP student. Mr. Stansbury, our Director of Operations, thought it would be a good experience for me to address you this morning. We are very excited and of course, we're very thankful for your continued support from all of us. We are very excited for the big game coming up this Saturday to showcase our senior all-stars, choir, cheer, JROTC, band members, sports media, and all the groups that participated in a regular Friday football game. It's going to be December 21st, this upcoming Saturday, at the Sun Bowl. And it's one last time for all these members from a regular football game to showcase their talent one last time. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And you know, it's interesting, when we read the resolutions, we get to find out all these details. You know, I used to go to a game and think it's the players, right? But now, the scholars, the cheerleaders, the, you know, the sports medicine, everybody gains from this. And obviously, anything that we could do for our youth and for them to be more engaged in El Paso and get recognition, and the number of, the amount of money that's been given in the scholarships is extremely impressive. So I want to thank you and the organization on behalf of Commissioners Court that thank you for doing that for our youth and hopefully, a lot of those will be coming back to our hometown here and being successful. And what a way to showcase. So thank you for that and the best of luck on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We do have one guest today here to speak, Mr. Jorge Artelejo.
So, thank you and thanking you. I want to thank, of course, Patricia, who did, so finally, with the county clerk's offices, you yourself are doing. Commissioners, Judge, I wanted to come down this morning because it's Christmas season and given that it's Christmas season, we hopefully all here in El Paso are gaining the spirit that is the Christmas season with respect to our beliefs and our traditions and our holdings regards to our expressions of the season that has fallen upon us because of events that we ourselves have no particular cause to have come about other than the remembrances that are inclusive of ourselves here this morning. But more importantly, I wanted to call attention to the community that lays before it, or rather awaits it in the year that is before us with regard to 2020 in its importance regards to those positions that the county is asked to fill. And it seems that the county, for the most part, even though there are qualms as to who it is that in fact is making those decisions that impact us all here in the county and for that part of the state of Texas that then has its momentum in the union that is restored to us by effort on both parts to ensure that integrity and quality is in fact addressed by that union that is the public. And in doing that, we have to remember that their agency with regard to their vote in fact has worked the benefit that is enjoyed by all those who enjoy that benefit regardless, again, once again, without regard to those who in fact participate in the process because whether it be one or whether it be all, the effect stands with regards to that outcome. And in doing so, I want to also recall to mind, or rather bring to mind, the fact that once again, that obligation is before them to in fact fill those positions that are obligated in order for us to be represented properly with regards to our agencies that we in fact are allowing to be governed by those who govern us. In doing that, then, we need to call address to those who are coming before the electorate for those considerations to call to mind that in fact, the past considerations in fact have given them the enjoyment that is before them prospectively now. And however, and however, though, that isn't to say that past decisions necessarily are decisions that espouse for tomorrow and that the importance of tomorrow is their tomorrow regards to those decisions that are a legacy with respect to that activity, the agency for us with those elected to office. So I wanted to welcome El Paso once again to the polls in March and hopefully, decisions that outcome in that welcoming are the proper decisions with regards to those interests that reside to them with regards to themselves as members of a community that is El Paso in the state that is of the union. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Artelejo.
Thank you. This completes Public Comment, which brings us to item number 7A, Presentation. Receive a presentation recognizing Judge Robert S. Anchondo for being awarded the Kevin E. Quinman Award for Excellence in Traffic Safety by the Foundation for Advancing Alcohol Responsibility.
Judge, I know that we have several people here. Maybe if it's okay with you and the court, we can postpone it for a little bit and give the judge time to hot-foot it down here.
Okay, thank you, absolutely. And Betsy, you had two items that you wanted to move up?
Yes, either half of them.
With your permission, Judge, to move up item number 20. We have item number 20 from Public Works. Pursuant to Texas Local Government Code Section 81.032, authorize the Planning and Development Department to accept the donation of design consulting services from Moreno Cárdenas Incorporated for the design of waterline extensions in the desert acceptance community. Further, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the agreement for Professional Services Project Square Dance Subdivision Limited Waterline Extensions between Moreno Cárdenas Incorporated and County of El Paso, Texas. Contract number 2019-0890.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioner Sosa-Landeros with the Planning and Development Department. Happy to be bringing this item before the court for the court's consideration this morning. This is in the desert acceptance or square dance community. We have We have recently celebrated the ribbon cutting of the wastewater project that was funded through the U.S. Department of Agriculture's Rural Initiatives Program to provide first-time wastewater service to the square dance community. Prior to that, there were, there was work to install water lines to provide potable drinking water to this community. However, because of the population patterns that were in place at the time, certain portions of the roads, certain lots were not served and don't have access to water. But because of our recent work for waste, to manage this wastewater grant, do have access to wastewater service, which is not typically the case. Typically, it's backwards. Typically, you have areas with water service that are needing sanitary sewer and not the other way around. So as part of the ongoing work here, as the court may recall, a few weeks ago, Parks and Recreation Department has submitted an application to develop a linear park along Square Dance Road. And Infrastructure Services recently went in and after the wastewater project was complete, provided paving to the, to these areas, really increasing the quality of life for residents in the desert acceptance community. However, there is, or there are rather, lots that do have residences on them now that did not have them then, that are currently lacking water. And so, what is being proposed to the court today is to accept a donation of engineering services from Moreno Cárdenas Incorporated, which is a local engineering firm and also the engineering firm who provided the design services for the wastewater project. And so as you see here on this figure that's before you, it would be extending the water lines down those approximately eight streets, no longer than 1,200 feet extensions, to provide water to all 400 lots within the desert acceptance community. And at that time, Infrastructure Services can then complete their paving. And every lot in this subdivision would go over the span of five, six years of having no sewer, no paving, some lots still missing water. At this point, the neighborhood would be as complete as possible with potential improvements forthcoming if Parks and Recreation is able to secure grant funding for that linear park. So really taking Ocolonia and really elevating it to as complete a neighborhood as possible. So we do have representatives here from Moreno Cárdenas who can speak a little bit to the project and the reason why they are wishing to provide this service to the desert acceptance community. I'm happy to take any questions that the court may have.
Yeah, absolutely.
Judge, thank you. Jose, thank you. Before Mr. Cárdenas or Mr. Clay come up here, we have been working, or my precinct, my office has been working with some of the people that were not living in those certain lots when the water was initially installed. And I know for a fact that one of those homes, in order to push the water out to their lot, would have been someplace in the neighborhood of about $43,000. So much more than they could possibly afford. And I know that the engineering that it takes for a project like this is extensive. I, for one, thought that what's a big deal as far as sewer service, that as long as it goes downhill, we're in good shape. But it's much, much more than that. So I am very thankful that they have taken the interest in that area because we've got about 275 families out there that really need that. And as you said, there's six streets out there that really need to have the water pushed out a little further and where we didn't have it in the past and it's going to make a quality of life impact on those families that we can't even measure. So I just wanted to preface it with that before Mr. Cárdenas or Mr. Clay speak.
And then Judge, if I may add, it's important to note that this is only for the design services. The construction, which would include labor, materials, that cost still exists and would, we would have a better estimate to provide the court as to what that cost may be once the design is complete by MCI. But this is a critical first step because what MCI is doing is providing the county with a shovel-ready project for construction that we may look to partner with other entities to see if there's a way to cost-share some of the expense that would go into providing this service. But it is a critical first step. The designing and engineering is a critical first step.
Jose, to be clear, it was not part of the original cost. This is going to be additional.
Right. So this is, this is separate and apart from the federal funds that were utilized from the U.S. Department of Agriculture, were only limited to wastewater installation. So we could not use those funds to install water lines. The scope of work was very specific. And so because there were federal funds attached to it, we could not modify the arrangement that we had with the U.S. Department of Agriculture, the contract to install this water line. So this is completely separate and apart. But MCI was the engineered record on that recently completed project. So they do have a lot of the survey data that was generated through that project. They're familiar with the area, having recently completed that design work. So not only are they familiar, but they should be able to provide the design very expediently.
Well, I'm very pleased that you got so close and you just have that much to go to really make it work and get the full impact of what you've done. So, thank you, Jose.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Joe Cárdenas. I'm president of Moreno Cárdenas. Before Brian steps to the podium, talk a little bit about some of the background in working on the Square Dance Wastewater Project. I'd like to give you a little brief history on why we're doing this. We've been providing engineering services of this type, low-income water and wastewater public services for almost 30 years. Our firm, on January 3rd, just a few weeks, will be 30 years. And I personally have worked on many of these projects. The first project I worked on was the Sparks Project, the one that was made national news. Didn't have water, didn't have wastewater. Through Rural Development, Rural Development has been one of your partners for over 30 years, just like in Square Dance. We designed that system. We also designed, our firm, hundreds of projects through the Texas Water Development Board's Economically Distressed Areas Program, primarily in San Luis Ario and Socorro. So we've been working on these projects to help these communities with that vital necessity for almost 30 years. And what brings me personally a lot of satisfaction in working on these projects is seeing that range of emotions of the people that live there. You know, there's hope initially, they hear of the project, but they know it's several years away. Then there's perhaps frustration. Commissioner Leon, we saw some of that frustration in this project. The delays were out of our hands. Could have been right of way. It could have been federal funding from our partners that was delayed. It could have been soil conditions, could have been contamination. So there was that, they, people knew the project was coming, but when is it coming? And then there was probably some skepticism. I hear construction is around the corner. Well, when is that? But the most important thing, and I think each and every one of you will agree, same with you, Commissioner Perez, and some of your projects that you're going to have in your precinct, you see that emotion in people. But the most important thing is that, that look in their face when that service is in place. They don't have to haul water anymore. They don't have to build a septic tank that gets plugged and starts to overflow. So that's what brings us great satisfaction in doing this project. Pro bono, no engineering. Like I said, we'll be in business 30 years. We've given back to this community in many ways. And this is something special for us, for Brian and me, that we want to finish this system. We didn't do the original water system. We did do the wastewater system, like Jose said. So these are the outliers, the water lines at the end of the streets that we thank you, Commissioner and the court. We thank Betsy, Norma, Munzer. Munzer, our partner on this. So we look forward to completing this project. And then I'll let Brian say a few words.
Thank you, Joe.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners.
Good morning, Brian.
Good morning.
I, you know, I won't elaborate much further beyond the fact that, yeah, we've been living with this project and you've been living with it longer. And we're really excited to really see it finished. You know, the wastewater system was done to protect, you know, public safety and welfare. That's really what is inherent to everything we do in engineering. That's what we're bound by. That's what we strive to. So the wastewater system being completed is one thing, but to really complete these last few lakes on the water side, which obviously is of critical and utmost importance to protect our public, is giving them a sound, quality water supply. So we're excited. We've been living with this since 14. We want to, we want to see it, see it done. And again, giving back, growing up in this community, seeing projects like this completed are real exciting and, you know, we take great pride in, I know I do. And I've enjoyed working with your team and Munzer since day one and then really enjoy seeing it completed again with, as Joe Munzer, Betsy, Norma, Jose, and Munzer are really wrapping it up. So we're excited and I want to thank you.
Well, Brian, Joe, and thank you and your organization for stepping up. One of the most important things that we need to do is that private industry participates to take some of the pressure off our taxpayers. And to see your organization stepping up and becoming a role model in most cities, it's a large, larger amount of people or private industry stepping up. So I hope this also is sort of a way to get other people to do similar things and take some of that pressure off our taxpayers. So thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve, authorize?
Second.
Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners. And if I may, I'd be remiss if, again, you heard his name mentioned multiple times, but projects such as these are really the, they're so successful because of the work that we have internally of the one-man show that is Mr. Munzer Al-Sarraj. And the work that he does is unmet, the dedication he has to help families without access to water or wastewater is, serves as a motivation within our staff to continue to do all the work that we do. So we really want to thank him and for all the work that he does as well.
Absolutely. Heard some
Thank you.
Great things and we keep hearing the great team that Public Work has and we thank you for that professionalism and for that partnership that Joe mentioned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, can we go back to item number 7A?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Item number 7A, presentations. Receive a presentation recognizing Judge Robert S. Anchondo for being awarded the Kevin E. Quinlan Award for Excellence in Traffic Safety by the Foundation for Advancing Alcohol Responsibility.
Here comes the judge.
I was hiding.
I was summoned here
Yes, you were.
To answer questions. That's what I was told.
We were going to have the red carpet, but we couldn't get it done in time.
Love the carpet.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you. Good morning.
Judge and Commissioners, thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to be present at today's meeting. It's extremely important to our organization to present this award and to do so in a forum such as this where Judge Anchondo really has a lasting presence. While I'll be brief, I do believe it is important to share the indelible mark that Judge Anchondo has left in the field and highlight the ways in which he continues to push for positive change at the local, state, and national level. My name is Erin Holmes and I am the Vice President of Criminal Justice Programs and Policy at Responsibility.org. We are a national nonprofit based in the Washington, D.C. area and we focus on the elimination of underage drinking and impaired driving. And we've done that for approximately three decades now. We advocate for evidence-based policies, programs, and strategies to address these issues, of course DWI courts being one of those important countermeasures. We are very privileged to be able to collaborate with leaders in both traffic safety and criminal justice from across the country, particularly members of the judiciary. Each year, our organization recognizes leaders and agents of change who through their work have made a significant contribution to the field. The Kevin E. Quinlan Award for Excellence in Traffic Safety is the highest honor our organization bestows and is reserved for individuals who have demonstrated both commitment and passion for reducing impaired driving and saving lives. No one is more deserving of this recognition than Judge Robert Anchondo. He truly is a man who needs no introduction in this arena, but his accomplishments are so numerous and influential that I want to take a moment to share but a few. One of the country's long-tenured DWI court judges, Judge Anchondo, is responsible for the establishment of the El Paso DWI and Drug Court Intervention and Treatment Program. In operation since 2004, the mission of the court is to reduce recidivism among alcohol and drug offenders and enhance public safety through both a cost-effective and integrated continuum of care. As the first treatment court in this region dedicated to DWI offenses, his court team focuses on proving delivery of services while promoting accountability and behavior change among the highest-risk individuals. Under his leadership, the El Paso DWI Court has made fidelity to the 10 guiding principles that have been established by the National Center for DWI Courts, making it a model program for other prospective court teams to learn from and replicate. It is one of four DWI courts in this country designated as an academy court. The practices and work that's being done here in El Paso in Judge Anchondo's courtroom form the basis for important lessons, which is why criminal justice practitioners from across the country travel here each year to observe and absorb the way that Judge Anchondo and his court team do business. Anyone who has had the pleasure of interacting with Judge Anchondo knows that he is truly an innovator. He is constantly identifying ways to strengthen his court structure and integrate new strategies and services to improve client outcomes. In addition to establishing multiple partnerships with community agencies and academic institutions, Judge Anchondo has also been instrumental in enhancing the continuum of services available to impaired drivers within this county, including those offenders who do not qualify to participate in his treatment court. Recently, Judge Anchondo led an effort to expand pretrial services with a focus on making more interventions available to impaired driving defendants. He brought in national experts to make a case to community leaders regarding how building up services at the pretrial phase could improve overall system outcomes. Other jurisdictions are now beginning to follow this approach, demonstrating that Judge Anchondo, as per usual, is ahead of the curve in pushing for the enhancement of the criminal justice system as a whole from point of arrest through to post-conviction. Judge Anchondo is also at the forefront of adapting the DWI court model to address the unique needs of the community here in South Texas. Unlike other academy courts, much of Judge Anchondo's participants here, of course, are of Hispanic descent and as such, require services provided in Spanish. His desire to address this issue led him to facilitate the translation of the Computerized Assessment and Referral System, also known as CARs, into Spanish. This is a groundbreaking assessment tool that is specific to DWI offenders and is used to identify the presence of both substance use disorders and co-occurring mental health We know that this population deals with a myriad of issues and it has been very important for our organization to work with Judge Anchondo through this process. Because of the effort he led, we are now going to have this instrument rolled out across the country in Spanish and it will be serving many communities and many individuals within the justice system as a result of these efforts. In addition to taking a culturally sensitive approach when assessing, supervising, and treating clients, the El Paso DWI Court has also been a leader in integrating families into the treatment court process. Judge Anchondo encourages family members to attend court and participate in activities to not only support their recovery, but to foster greater understanding regarding their risk factors and ways to safeguard against relapse. Family members can be supportive of progress and promote accountability. By re-establishing family ties and relationships, the DWI Court is simultaneously strengthening communities. Again, Judge Anchondo has been a leader on this front and other courts are seeking to replicate this approach and foster these types of support networks for participants. You see, Judge Anchondo is both a leader and a visionary in the field of treatment courts and frankly, criminal justice much more broadly because he does not accept the status quo. Changes and enhancements can always be made. Further progress can always be achieved. His tremendous His tremendous expertise is the reason why Responsibility.org appointed him to our judicial advisory board and why we rely on his insight to steer our organization in the right direction when it comes to advocating for DUI system improvements. For these reasons and many more, we recognize and celebrate the contributions of Judge Anchondo to the fields of traffic safety and criminal justice. His unrelenting passion, leadership, and limitless drive to eliminate impaired driving, address substance abuse, and share his experiences with others are what makes him more than deserving of this honor. Judge Anchondo has steadfastly remained committed to not only saving lives, which is an undeniable outcome of the El Paso DWI Court, but also changing the lives of his court participants and their families. His work and leadership strengthens the community of El Paso as a whole and this has a broader ripple effect throughout Texas as well as the nation. I am both honored and humbled to call him a mentor and friend and I know I speak for my organization as well as many of our peers in the field when I say that we are truly privileged to collaborate with such an influential judicial mind. In closing, I'm reminded of the words of Ralph Waldo Emerson who wrote, "Do not go where the path may lead. Go instead where there is no path and leave a trail." Judge Anchondo continues to blaze trails and countless lives have been and will be affected for the better as a result.
Judge, I, I know you well and that must have been hard because I know how humble you are, but how accurate. And thank you for giving us the privilege of honoring him in our presence and, and his peers. So, thank, thank you for that. That was very, very relevant to who this gentleman is.
Thank you. Uh, this wasn't a surprise. In fact, coming over here, I said, "What questions are you gonna have?" Because I'm not prepared. So, uh, all I can say is that those words, uh, thank you so much. You know, after doing this so long, I think you have to, you know, reflect a little bit. And I think what I'm doing here is, um, reflecting on an idea that was created some time ago. How to handle these cases, how to handle these folks. Restore their lives, restore their families, make our community safer, our roads safer, but more so helping them just be better individuals. And I guess it does have a reward, but my statement would be that the intervention treatment court that was created here in El Paso was not done alone. It was through your old efforts embracing it. Past judges, past commissioners, city council, city council members, law enforcement, probation, counselors, treatment, doctors, public defenders, defense counsel, district attorneys, um, my colleagues. You know, when you have that kind of a team, you can't go wrong. You only build on it. But I think we've done it because it was sorely needed. I think we're doing a good job. Can we do more? Yes. Um, you know, teaching, uh, teaching this nationwide also has allowed me to find out what other issues are in, in other areas of our country. But you know, this is a prevalent issue that, as you can see, we're already having tragedy here in, in our community. And so, the only thing we always try to do is just make an impression and, and, and just try to manage these, these cases better and manage them, um, more efficiently so that they don't come back and that they don't go out and, and commit something that they're really gonna regret. So, Erin, thank you so much for, for this award. Um, I think it's, it's a high honor for this community, for this city, for this county, be able to embrace a program that has really made a difference in people's lives. And, and I wanna thank the team that I have. Letty's here, um, our officers are here, Lori, my coordinator's here, my lovely wife is here, our supporters from a smart starter here and others. And this whole community, I really wanna thank everyone here. I'm just at a loss, but.
Pretend you're in your courtroom.
That's the funny thing. I thought I could do that. Uh, but I do wanna thank Responsibility org and, uh, thank you for such a wonderful honor. The only thing I can do is, is continue to do the hard work that we're doing here with a wonderful team. Uh, and help those individuals and their families just get better and, and be safer. So, thank you again so much from the bottom of my heart.
Well, you know, I wanna thank you. I've been around in the mental health and programs and initiatives and the holistic approach that, that you take is probably one of the most complex things that you could do because it takes so many elements and all the mechanics of, of what it takes and the logistics and, and, but you could take all those concepts and all those approaches, but your leadership and, and your team, that's what really makes the difference. And so, I'm very, very impressed with, with what you do and very thankful for this kind of an award. You're, you almost outdid your outstanding exit Jefferson. I mean, just, you're almost there. I mean, just, this is about as close as it can get. So, thank you very much, Mrs. Anchondo. I know, you know, your, your support and giving him the time to, to, to do these things. Uh, you know, I, I understand what you need to do for him to be successful. So, thank you for giving him away so much of the day and, and, and his life to be able to do this.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Anchondo. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Oh, there we go. They're coming to. I gotta get over here, I think. Get, get the other side. Get your other better sides. Okay. One, two, three. One more. Have one more. All right, everybody. One, two, three. Thank you.
Item number eight from purchasing. Approve the purchase of a water tower for the Public Works Road and Bridge Department using Cooperative Education Services Public Educational Institution in New Mexico Contract 18-020B-C103, awarded to Wagner Equipment Company of El Paso, Texas in the amount of $63,797.98. Purchasing approved on December 3, 2019. Funding is available in SR Road and Bridge Ops Equipment.
Good morning, Deborah Crejo Troll County Purchasing Agent. In this case, we're requesting the purchase of a water tower and we would like to use an El Paso vendor that does have an existing contract available through the Cooperative Education Services, the Cooperative, the Cooperative of Educational Services. If you have specific questions about this water tower or the purpose of it, we do have representatives from Public Works in the room.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nine, approve the purchase of hardware and software for global positioning satellite tracking devices for county fleet vehicles using Region 19 Contract 19-7325, awarded to Alamo Industries, doing business as Alamo Auto Supply of El Paso, Texas. Purchasing approved on December 3, 2019. Funding is available in General Fund Fleet Operations GPS Service.
Deborah Crejo Troll County Purchasing Agent. In this case, we are wanting to use the Region 19 Contract to award to Alamo, an El Paso vendor for the GPS units for the, the entire fleet, which we do have fleet representative here if you have questions about that program.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioner Sopton Staple, Fleet Operations Director.
Good morning.
I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on this. Again, this is an, an enduring project, meaning as new vehicles are introduced into the fleet, we add a GPS tracking device. Currently, we have 461 vehicles on this tracking device program. Every county vehicle, with the exception of a few in our law enforcement units, have a GPS tracking device. These devices are used to monitor speed and idling, uh, driver behavior and so forth and so forth. This started back in 2013 where we added 97 GPSs. In 2018, we added 81, I'm sorry, in 2014, we added 81. In 2015, we added 50. In 2016, we added 16 vehicles. In 2017, we added 177 vehicles. In 2018, we added 29. And in 2019, we added 11 vehicles. So, again, as new vehicles are introduced, we add a GPS tracking device. This item is to pay the annual subscription fee.
Move to approve?
Aye.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 10, approve the purchase of data centers, maintenance, and support for MDR and POD locations used by the county through Information Technology Department using DIR Contract DIR TSO 4160, awarded to Hewlett-Packard Enterprise Company of Roseville, California in the amount of $275,418.87. Purchasing approved on December 11, 2019. Funding is available in General Fund ITD Maintenance and Repair Hardware.
Deborah Crejo Troll County Purchasing Agent. We'd like to request the authorization to use the, the Department of Information Resource Cooperative, which is the State of Texas purchases for computer and IT equipment. In this case, it's to provide maintenance and support for the county's Hewlett-Packard equipment. And if, if this is approved or if you have questions, we do have an IT representative here that can answer questions about current Hewlett-Packard products in the county.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 11, approve the award recommendation for parts, maintenance, and repair services for prisoner transport buses and commercial vehicles for the county of El Paso using Region 19 Contract 197332, awarded to RJ Border International LP of El Paso, Texas. Purchasing approved on December 3, 2019. Funding is available in various department accounts.
Deborah Crejo Troll County Purchasing Agent. We're requesting to be able to, uh, award to RJ Border International of El Paso, Texas for repair of the prisoner transport buses. This will be through the Region 19 Contract. That means pricing is controlled for both repair and parts during the course of this one-year option.
Move to approve? Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye. Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 12, approve and authorize the purchasing agent to reject all responses and close RFP 20-005, gym services for the county of El Paso and resolicit.
Deborah Crejo County Purchasing Agent. Ooh, Deborah Crejo Troll County Purchasing Agent. Um, in this case, I'm requesting permission to reject all responses and you'll see who responded attached. We did not get as many responses as we currently have available for employees. And so, in a united effort between Human Resources and the Purchasing Department, we not only wanna try to increase distribution, um, but possibly look at any way this can become more clarifying in order to entice people to come to the table. I believe this is tied to a benefit that employees receive that is part of the overall health and wellness program. But we do have representatives from HR here if you'd like more information about that program specifically.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 13, approve and authorize the purchasing agent to solicit proposals for contracted services for the El Paso County Tax Assessor Collector locations. In accordance with Local Government Code 262.030, the purchasing agent has reviewed use of the request for proposal process.
Deborah Crejo Troll County Purchasing Agent. In this case, I'm here before you to ask permission to use the request for proposal process for something that is neither high technology nor insurance. The State of Texas recently changed the rules and requirements related to how the tax assessors and collectors, um, can obtain their deputies. In this case, it's going to involve an overhaul for how Rubin is, uh, doing things with his current contracts. He's here to speak to that and the specifics of those state changes if you need that information. But what I'm requesting is the permission to continue on, get the specifications, and solicit, uh, proposals from qualified vendors.
Judge, since I see Mr. Gonzalez there, uh, maybe for our listening public, he can explain what those changes may be.
Morning, Judge. County Commissioners.
Good morning.
Ruben Gonzalez, County Tax Assessor Collector. Um, this is, this is a request that was prompted by the Sunset Review of the Texas DMV. And out of this review, um, they came out with Senate Bill 604. And it, it requires now that all the existing contracted offices in counties that have private offices go out for rebidding. They're trying to address their concern about fraud. There's only four counties in the state of Texas that has private offices. El Paso, San Antonio, Austin, and Idago County have private offices. So, we're starting this rebidding process with all our existing companies and hopefully we can get this done by April 1st. That is the deadline that we're mandated to. That is the deadline that we're mandated to have all this completed by then. I didn't hear your question, Commissioner. Did I answer your question?
No, you did. This is really for the public, and as I understand it, that if it wasn't for these offices, there's no way that we could handle the influx.
That is correct, very much so, Commissioner. We've done studies and reviewed our processes. Currently, our private offices perform at least 50% of our work. So they were involved, all that work would come back to our offices. We'd have to provide the infrastructure, buildings, and new employees. And the first calculation that I heard back two or three years ago when I came on board was at least $3.1 million to accommodate those type of offices where that work revert back to us. So maintaining them, they do, they do help us perform this job of tallying registering vehicles in our county.
Having heard that, motion to approve?
Second? Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 14. Litigation Justice in Law Enforcement. Postponed December 9, 2019, approve and authorize the purchase and installation of 12 panic buttons for the Justice Court Precinct 5 in the amount of $1,600. The purchase was approved by the Council of Justices on November 21, 2019. Funding is available in Special Revenue Justice Court Security Operations Contingencies. Further approve the reallocation of funds from Special Revenue Justice Court Security Operations Contingencies to Special Revenue Justice Court Security Operations Equipment.
Judge and Commissioners, I had pulled this from the consent agenda last week because I had some additional information, additional questions that I wanted answered. You know, my first concern was that the money was being pulled from a contingency fund and, you know, was not budgeted for, uh, through the regular budgeting process. It was taken out, it's moving contingency monies to the security fund. I know it's not a lot of money, but I also was concerned with, with just the number of panic buttons. I definitely think that we need to make sure that our JP offices, especially the ones that are not here at the courthouse, are, are safe and, and it, I hadn't seen any recommendations. I know that we had in the past looked at JP 5, and there were recommendations about making certain changes, including putting in bulletproof walls and windows and make, and which I believe are going to be happening soon, from what Judge Chapman told me. And however, the report that we got from the county did say that there were insufficient panic buttons. I just wondered about the need for 12 of them, since all of the other construction is going to be occurring. There's definitely, I think, a need for panic buttons in the, in the judge's chambers and his courtroom. And then I also wanted to understand, there's a gentleman, Mr. Gomez, he came and spoke to us. He's from the State Agency, a State Agency, and he came in and did an assessment and made recommendations also regarding putting in panic buttons. But his recommendation was to install them just in the, in the courtroom and in the clerk's, in the clerk, in the clerk's room. So, you know, I, I think that we should request that in the future, when, when the security issues come up, that they, that they be requested during regular budgeting and not be pulled out of contingencies, instead be asked for as part of the security budget. I know this item was also approved by the, the council, the JP's council. So I'll go ahead and move to approve. I, I do think, again, that we should ask the JP council that their members do things the other, the other way. I, I still think that 12 is probably maybe, maybe too many, but it's not, it's not a huge cost, and so I'll, I'll go ahead and move to approve.
Second? Hold on, Wally, do you have?
Just wanted to add in a comment there, Commissioner. Thank you very much. Wally Hart grew up in the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. As a matter of policy and procedure, the Council of Justices has presented with a written instruction sheet on how to make those annual requests as part of the normal operating budget. You are right, 12 seems to be high. We looked at that as well, and they want to have a panic button at every possible station that an employee may sit at, even if there's not one there now. And, and just for clarification, the Ops contingency that they're requesting to have these funds allocated from is the 90% of the fund balance within the security fund. So it will stay within special revenues and will not hit the general fund contingency, just as a matter of information.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 15. Discuss and take appropriate action to authorize a new deputy constable position in the office of the Constable Precinct 3. At the request of the Constable Precinct 3, we'd like to ask for this item be deleted.
Judge and Commissioners, if I may, I had a conversation with Constable Bernal, and because this request is coming outside a regular budget season, and really to dovetail to what just was said by Commissioner Stout, if he could wait, I support his, his request. But again, it's outside our budget season, and he was nice enough. He's a team player and said that he would hold off on it, he'll delete it and re-present it during our budget talks. So I really appreciate it. My hat's off to Constable Bernal and make a motion to delete this item.
Second?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 16. Economic Development. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Regional Marketing Professional Service Agreement between the County of El Paso, Texas, City of El Paso, City of El Paso, Texas, and the El Paso Community Foundation to provide financial support for regional and international economic development and tourism marketing efforts in the amount of $100,000 for a period of one year from and after the effective date. Funding is available in Special Revenue Tourist Promotions Advertising. Contract number 2019-0836.
Good morning, Judge Samaniego. Commissioners Valerie Vanessa, Heritage Tourism Coordinator for Economic Development.
Good morning, Valerie.
And with me this morning is also Mr. Wingo from Sanders Wingo, who is the creative force behind the production of the marketing campaigns that we will be collaborating with the City of El Paso and the El Paso Community Foundation. This was approved by Commissioners Court back in July, and so now we are bringing the actual contract forth for your approval this morning between the County of El Paso and the El Paso Community Foundation. Switching the contract to the Community Foundation as opposed to the City of El Paso opens up the opportunity for continued procurement of funding through sponsorships and other grants that we wouldn't normally be eligible for as a government agency. So far, there have been over six crews involved in filming for the last month, and so we have quite a bit of footage to choose from in further development of the different campaigns. And at this time, we'll go ahead and take a look at the first of a series of videos that was produced as part of this effort.
The intersection of possibilities is here, where Texas, New Mexico, and Mexico triumphantly come together. This is where El Paso, Las Cruces, and Juarez are one, and the future of economic development is dynamic and wide open. Here, we are a region reborn. Industries are emerging and growing exponentially. Momentum is huge. Business is booming. Multi-million dollar hotel renovations. Multiple highway expansions. Three sports teams in five years. It's vibrant. It's electric. It's changing shape every day. This is where the Rio Grande, Chihuahua Desert, and three separate mountain ranges unite, and the flow of products and exchange of ideas is never ending. Here, with a population of 2.5 million, thrives a rich and authentic mix of Mexican and American tradition. This is where languages, geography, and histories seamlessly blend. Here, we're producing the next generation of fresh young minds, thought leaders, and social game changers. Our people are everything. Here you find the versatility, productivity, and fluidity of a strong bilingual and binational workforce that's well-versed in navigating business environments in two countries. Here, where academia meets industry, our universities and top global companies are working hand in hand to cultivate a highly skilled, diverse, and driven talent pipeline. Our military and veteran community is also a huge part of our workforce story, generating its own unique stream of specialty trained workers. This is where military might and tech innovation are interwoven. With the most expansive regional military complex in the nation, our defense sector is a major economic driver. Fort Bliss is also partnering with local universities for research, training, and certifications in cybersecurity, data analytics, and drone operation. With our advances in aerospace, we're at the intersection of earth and sky. We're home to the NASA White Sands Test Facility and Spaceport America, the first purpose-built commercial spaceport in the world. At our universities, the biggest names in aerospace are looking to us for research and talent. Here, agriculture has long been a cornerstone. It's the second-largest industry in New Mexico, producing a variety of signature crops, including green chilies, pecans, hemp, and pima cotton. We're also pushing the boundaries of food manufacturing and developing food processing facilities. Here, ideal location meets world-class fabrication. We have the fourth-largest manufacturing hub in North America, accounting for 17% of all trade with Mexico, and over 70 Fortune 500 companies call our region home. Our geostrategic corridor has long been a gateway for trade and the home of countless origin stories. This is where North American trade began, situated on I-10 and I-25 with six international ports of entry, binational air and rail access, and a recent $420 million investment by Union Pacific toward a state-of-the-art intermodal rail and truck facility, we're fast becoming one of the most critical trade centers along the U.S.-Mexico border. Here, leading healthcare meets the future face of America. Our region's demographics truly reflect where the general population is headed, making us the place for monumental strides in the medical sector. We're better equipped today to solve the health issues of tomorrow. Here is where world-class companies meet small-town business environment, where you have greater access to city leadership, where our fearless pioneer spirit fuels entrepreneurialism. This is where affordable living meets high quality of life. With an average house cost of under $200,000, homeownership is very much a reality. This is where your dollar and your desire to explore both go further, and an outstanding climate yields virtually no weather interruptions. Here, there are sights, sounds, and flavors all their own. From food, to finance, to fashion, we are a constant source of new creation. Connected by proximity, lifestyle, work ethic, and boundless optimism, we are collectively redefining the urban economic landscape. Three cities, one region, one shared vision. Welcome to El Paso, Juarez, and Las Cruces. Welcome to the intersection of possibilities.
All right, so today's agreement is for a three-year period, starting with $100,000 in the first year, and the renewals at $75,000 each subsequent year. And at this time, if there's any questions, otherwise, if it's the will of the court to make a motion to approve the contract for marketing, for the regional marketing initiative.
Yeah, just want to make a comment on Bob Wingo's excellent work, and finally, a regional approach that's so much needed. A lot of work, when he presented, the amount of work and the time and everything that had to go into it is just pretty impressive, and the reception that it received when it was kicked off was amazing, the number of people that showed up. But I think it's one of the things that, you know, is very important, is that we all become ambassadors of this region. I think we've been good ambassadors of each one of our, you know, El Paso, Las Cruces, or Juarez, but I think having that different approach of being an ambassador for the region, I think that's going to be our big challenge, but that's going to bring a lot of rewards back. You know, just if you put all the synergism of this region, it's unbeatable. I mean, there's nowhere in the, in the world that has this kind of synergism. It's now just exposing it. It's so much, so important to our community, to our economic development. So I thank Mr. Wingo. That's really a lot of work, you and your team, and everything that you had to do. We thank you for that. Appreciate it. Commissioner?
I just have a question, so that, so that the public knows. Where, where and how, and how is this marketing strategy going to be used? What's, what's the plan with the video? Where, where are we going to show it? Who's going to see it? You know, just, just so people know exactly what this means.
First of all, we have a URL called intersectionofpossibilities.com, which is made available to anyone and everyone. First of all, excuse me. Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, for having an opportunity for a brief conversation. The beauty of this is this is only phase one. What we're going to do is we're going to build a content marketing hub. That content marketing hub, working in concert with Borderplex, the city, the county, Juarez, and Las Cruces, will give us the ability to build content components, i.e., if we want to talk about water, we want to talk about education, we want to talk about quality of life in place, biomedical sciences. All these things will live on those hubs. We will have infographics, we will have podcasts, we will have mapping, we'll have other information. We will have 90, 60s, 45s, 30s, and 15-second pieces of content that can be, excuse me, that can be sent to site selectors, business leaders. This is going to be broadcast to the world, media, politicians, business leaders, site selectors. We had the good fortune last Friday of previewing this with a couple of site selectors. They were overwhelmingly supportive and excited about what we're doing. We've had thousands and thousands of responses online regarding this. This is a public-private partnership. In year one, we have raised in excess of $1 million. Year two and three, we have $1 million also raised. This is going to be an opportunity to tell a regional story in depth and on a continuous basis. This is information that will be refreshed and repurposed on an ongoing way, so that we will always have fresh content out there available to businesses that are looking to move to our region, and also to let our citizens know that exciting things are happening. We discovered a lot of things in shooting this video, as was shared, 22 days of shooting just on this phase one. What we want to do is quarterly now have probably three or four days of shooting, maybe five, where we go back and pick up key content, key pieces of information that we can, again, share, and reaching out to business leaders and community leaders and others to share the vision and the value that we're going to bring as a region. Hopefully, this will give us the opportunity, where rising tides will raise all boats. We can help Juarez, Las Cruces, and El Paso by showing the world that we can compete with the Denvers, the Dallas's, the Chicago's, Miami, wherever it happens to be. We're going to have quality marketing materials that will share our story. Any questions?
I was going to say, on a, on a practical, I gave that link to a gentleman that's going to, to Europe on a business, and he's going to meet with 50 different businessmen from all over the world.
Yes, sir.
And so he now has a tool. Otherwise, he'd get there and he'd try to explain, and in this five-minute, it really gives a feel for that. So on that practical use of using that link however we need it, it's very, very fortunate.
I have a pocketful of cards here, too, that have the I have a pocketful of cards here, too, that have the intersectionofpossibilities.com on them. If anybody wants one, I've got them.
Very practical.
Yes, sir.
I was just going to ask, when you talk about the public-private partnership.
Yes, sir.
So the city and the county are putting in funding, and who else is participating? Can you tell us that?
Well, we've had our typical community leaders, we've had people from El Paso, Juarez, we have the Hunts, we've had Tropicana Homes, the Water Utility, the Electric Company, Paul Foster, many, many other people have contributed on the Mexican side of the border. We have commitments in Las Cruces. This is not an easy undertaking, going out trying to fundraise to build something like this, because it's not, this has never been done like this before. We're really building content hubs and content homes and constantly updating. Usually, if somebody does a nice video, what we try to do is a combination of quality of life and place plus industry sectors, and again, this is just step one. You will see in the coming months, starting in January, February, we're going to come back and we'll start building on the content hub, so that we have the kind of content and information. If any of you go into a conference, you're going to have the ability to say, "I need this piece, this piece, and this piece," or "I need this overarching piece." Five minutes, someone's told me that's long. It's long, because in order to capture the essence of our region, we had to do that. If a company is looking at a regional opportunity, now they at least have a 30,000-foot view of what our communities really have to offer. Now what we're going to do is drill down and go deep in key areas and get the details, the universities, the community colleges, K through 12, so that we have all the things that we need. Fort Bliss, White Sands, the water desal, all these key issues, biomedical sciences, so that we really sit down, and this is fluid, we're going to take input, and we're going to keep updating and changing, so that the intersection of possibilities really becomes a reality, and this is a tool that all of us can use, along with Borderplex and others. I've already had a request from Movida and Las Cruces. They have an RFP, and they want to use the video. When you look at Gopin in Texas, and they said, "We want to use part of your footage in what we do to promote the state of Texas." I think that's a big positive for us. So again, this is just phase one. We have a lot of work in front of us. We're working, as we speak, to build a bigger, better marketing presentation and branding initiative, so that we have a brand that we can collectively stand behind for this entire region.
Thank you for the information.
Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your work.
Mr. Wingo, sometimes I tune in in some college football games, and they have videos during the breaks about their schools, about their cities, that are very impressive, and you learn some, "I didn't know that about that city." This is by far the best video I've seen. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie.
Item number 17, information technology. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the maintenance and support services agreement between the County of El Paso and Hewlett-Packard Enterprise. Funding is available in general fund, ITD Maintenance and Repair Hardware. Contract number 2019-0914.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Nanette Acachi, ITD Support Manager. The item before you is a request to approve and authorize the county judge to sign an agreement for the continued support and maintenance of the El Paso County's core infrastructure equipment. This equipment is vital in providing a reliable platform for information delivery and the effective delivery of technology-related systems. The agreement has been reviewed and approved by ITD, the County Attorney's Office, and the Purchasing Department. At this time, ITD recommends approval.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon has stepped out of the meeting. Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and you all have a Merry Christmas.
Likewise. Thank you.
Item number 18, Public Works. Postpone December 2, 2019. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding entrance fees for Ascarate, family memberships, and other park use fees.
Good morning. Judge and Commissioners. Veronica Myers, Parks and Recreation Director. And with me are golf pro Mike Smith. So we went back and did some research on the area golf courses. the only two golf courses in town that also offer a family membership are Painted Dunes and Underwood, and you can see the fees there are quarterly, yearly, and they have no couples. As far as Underwood. The other difference in our golf course is we're municipally operated, owned and operated compared to others. We did, we went to New Mexico and the areas, and there's a family quarterly for $1,200, couples quarterly for $1,050, Sonoma Ranch in Las Cruces, New Mexico, and then Red Hawk Golf Club, also in New Mexico. $4,800 is a family annually. Other municipal golf courses in Dallas and Houston do not offer couples' memberships If we want to offer couples a quarterly membership, what we did was we did the adult fee for two adults for the quarterly, add a 10% discount, and rounded it, and we did the same with the senior couple quarterly. And then the family membership, we just did the price of two adults, and then the two children that are enrolled in school up to the age of 23, living in the same household, could go for free. So that could be juniors that are up to the age of 17 are $50 a month, so that would be a savings of $100 a month. If it was another adult, you would have almost a 50% discount, because it would be two other adults at that rate. So however, in also doing some other research, of all of our memberships sold, our memberships have gone down because of all the discounts that we have for college students, for honoring our heroes, our veterans, our military, our first responders. We have a junior discount, we have senior discounts, we have a lot of other discounts, and also, so they prefer, they have preferred to pay the daily green fee with their discount instead of their memberships. So our memberships went down by like more than 150 from one year to the next.
Did that impact some of the revenue, or was it offset, or?
We had more than 6,000, about 6,000 more rounds of golf last year than the previous year. In the month of October this past year compared to last year, we had 400 in November, which is usually a slower month, and it's colder. We start going into our winter season, our slowest three months, which is November, December, and January, and we sold over 100 more rounds. We had 100 more rounds of golf in one month.
And the golf course revenue increased by $81,000 between FY 2018 and FY 19.
But that's great insight that we're drawing more, because that's what you want to know specifically, maybe other have different approaches, but it looks like the daily discount has really attracted more, you know, more participation. That's a great insight, because you look at the drop in membership, and then you might assume a problem, but you've just identified the answer to it.
A lot of the increase is due to golf cart fees.
Uh huh.
Right. And also, the, we just have a lot of benefits in our golf course. Not only are we making improvements, but we have the home of the first tee, we support all the schools, and now we're in contracts with them as well, and we also have, we also are centrally located. We're centrally located, so you can actually, you know, take a half-day and go golf, you can take a lunch and do a nine-hole. We just, we have a lot of benefits to.
And the beauty of attracting people that, or golfers that might not be able to afford it, or, you know, where we're at really captures a part of the county that doesn't have those kinds of opportunities to have. And so we need to take into consideration all the things that happen other than the revenue itself, so.
Judge, if I may, also, I want to just clarify something. Commissioner Perez has followed up with us about, the last time we presented, we talked about revenue from memberships. When we mentioned that we have almost $1 million in revenue at the golf course, that's from all categories, not just membership. So it's green fees, it's carts, it's concessions, lessons, from all sources. Our revenue for FY 19 was approximately $969,000, I believe. Yes, $969,304, but not just from memberships, from all sources.
All sources, okay. Thank you, Betsy.
And that's just at the golf course, right?
That's the golf course by itself.
And similar to what I asked last time, I guess, how many memberships would it take for us to reach that break-even point, where I guess there isn't that subsidy for memberships?
Right now, for memberships, it's very low. Again, we've gone down on memberships because people prefer to pay the daily, because it's a better discount in that case. So we would have to double the amount of everything that we're doing to break even. Yes. Point.
So it costs close to $2 million to run the golf course?
Operating, we're making almost $1 million, we would have to double that plus. So, I mean, so that's why we're working on not just, you know, making more revenue, but also decreasing our expenses, and also getting creative into more programming, fun things that families want to come out to do, and we'll be having a whole new programming plan this summer.
Can you remind me, what was the, what was the family membership fee before?
The quarterly family was $260.
And it was mostly couples using it. Can you go back up to that recommendation slide, Veronica?
Yes, it was, it was couples that were using it.
Sorry, you said 280?
260.
260, okay.
260. If it is this, where we don't offer it, because we have, out of the 200 and out of the 826 memberships sold in FY 18, 19, FY 19, there was only those seven couples.
So it was seven couples, not actually, not actually families, it was just couples?
Right. One family out of those, out of those, 826 memberships sold.
Now we create a, before we didn't have an adult couple quarterly fee, now we're looking at creating one, and there'd be an increase of about $125 a year for the whole, for the couple, right? Since it's going up to 385 instead of 260?
Right. $125 a quarter increase.
I'm sorry, a quarter, yeah. $125.
A quarter.
$125 a quarter. Is that basically reflective of the increase in the fees, the green fees?
Well, no, sir, because the, basically, what we did is we, first of all, we originally had eliminated it, but what this is, is this is taking the new green fees for a single adult, multiplying it by two, and giving a 10% discount.
Okay.
So there's a 10% discount if you come as a couple.
And that takes into account how many, how many rounds, or how do you?
They can come as, they can come as long as they want.
No, yeah, I know, I mean, I know, with the memberships, they can come as many times as they want, but you're expecting them to come at least how many times?
So what's the cost of one round for an adult?
Dollars on Saturday.
On a Saturday.
Then, oh, and then we do 11 at one.
So if a couple, that would be $44 a couple, and so if a couple came approximately nine times a month in the morning to golf.
That would break even.
I'm sorry, nine times a quarter.
A quarter, yeah.
They would be getting their money's worth. And if you came every weekend, you'd be well ahead.
Question is, the senior couple quarterly or the senior? That's a reduced rate, that they can't play until noon on Saturdays. That's a golf, across the board, they do that. Because the senior rate is less, and it's a discounted rate in the beginning.
But with the senior couple quarterly, that rule would apply as well, so that if you had a senior couple quarterly, you wouldn't be able to play until noon?
They wouldn't be able to play until noon on Saturday and Sunday and holidays.
And that's, that's industry standard for a golf.
And also, can you please remind me the, what we had proposed last time for the, we had proposed just getting rid of the family membership, right? We didn't.
Originally.
Right.
Why we did it? Because of the limited amount and not, it was a family. We never had a couples. We had, it was a family membership being used as a couples.
And so, and it's pretty clear that, you know, it's quite a bit less expensive than the other family memberships that are offered at the other two, at the other two golf courses, because at Painted Dunes, 600 bucks for a quarter, and at Underwood, but at Underwood, it's a little, it's competitive with Underwood, so. I know, I think last time we talked about, there really wasn't much of an appetite to grandfather in the families, right? The seven or eight families that had the prior, the prior rate, and I understand that. So I'll go ahead and move to, to approve with the, this adult couple quarterly at 385, senior couple quarterly at 305, and the family membership at 430.
Second.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you both.
Thank you all very much for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 19, receive a presentation regarding the update to the county's 2010 stormwater master plan from AECOM, the project engineering consultant.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Salam Neros with the Planning and Development Department. Over the past year, our staff has been working with our project consultant, AECOM, in conjunction with El Paso Water, on updating the stormwater master plan that the county initially developed in 2010 in partnership with the Texas Water Development Board. The plan is being revised to update new rainfall information as well as new cost estimates, given the inflation that has occurred over the past 10 years. And so the consultant is here this morning, Mr. Clint Kimball, one of the engineers who has been working on this project, will provide an update on the first phase of the update that is being presented, which includes primarily projects within the Lower Valley, as well as the addition of the East Montana area, an area that was actually exempted from the initial study back in 2010. And so with that, I'll go and turn it over to Mr. Kimball.
Thanks, Jose. Thanks for your time. I'm Clint Kimball with AECOM, and I'll just dive right into my presentation here. So I'm going to break this down into four general topics. I'm going to go over the stormwater master plan, which was developed in 2010 by the county. I'm going to talk about our update, we're performing to it currently, and I'm going to discuss project comparison and then talk about next. to discuss project comparison and then talk about next steps. So first, the storm water master plan, published in 2010. Going back in time a few extra years, we have the Storm 2006, which made us aware, it made the county aware of need for not just storm water control, but debris flow that comes with the storm water. This, as you are aware, was a major event, happened on the west side of the Franklin Mountains, upwards of six inches of rain in a day, even more than that, over a four-day period. It caused liquefaction of soils up in the Franklin Mountains, which resulted in heavy sediment debris flow down in the valley. So you don't just have to worry about storm water, you have to worry about debris, washing, filling up culverts, washing out culverts, as you can see on the figure on the right here, even burying cars. You can see that car is buried in a pretty deep slug of debris. So, 2010, the county published a storm water master plan, which involved, or it included 23 dams or basins, 22 crossing improvements, and nine potential channel improvements. All theoretical projects designed and conceived to control storm water and especially debris flow, concentrated largely on the slopes of the Franklin Mountains and on the lower Rio Grande Valley, as the slopes go into the populated and agricultural areas. To get a better idea of where these projects are, these 23 dams, 22 crossing improvements, this figure shows in green triangles where the dam, proposed dams are, where the proposed culverts are, in the yellow circles, and some channel improvements. You can see the distribution of projects here, and notably, the northeastern area of the county is empty, was not considered in the original storm water master plan. This storm water master plan included a prioritization list, which included the following criteria: number of residences impacted or benefited by these projects, acres of agricultural land, whether or not routine floods are controlled, whether or not, you know, it reduced the sediment yield, the debris flow issue, whether there's a divided highway, critical route, and then the county decided, you know, it ranked these different criteria based on subjective measures and then came with priority categories, 1 through 3. So now it's 2019, it's almost 2020, we're updating the storm water master plan. Some things have changed. So this storm water master plan update, it's been divided into two phases. Phase 1 is complete, phase 2 is conceived to start shortly. So I'm just going to be focusing on phase 1 for this presentation, which includes all these projects near the Socorro, Hacienda Real area, as well as new projects up in the northeastern area of the county. And these were prioritized, these were selected to be done first because of change in development patterns, a lot of new development going on in those areas in the red boxes. Here's a list of most of the projects that were listed. You can see the 2010 estimated cost in column 2, and then our estimated cost in column 3 for 2020, based off of changes in the Consumer Price Index and based on increase in rainfall because of the recently published Atlas 14. So the 100-year, 1% annual chance rainfall, as we understand it now, is higher than what it was in 2010. And that's because of more data, more rainfall data, better understanding of the rainfall in the area. Here's the Montana Sector addition, which is the northeastern edge of the county. On this figure, you can see the existing effective FEMA flood zones, Zone A, which is not technically reliable, it's very old. There's new FEMA flood zones that are going to be released soon. We obtained those models, and based on those models, it made a few modifications. It came up with our own estimate of what the 100-year area of risk is, which you can see in light blue, and put a red dot on each of the houses impacted by that 100-year flood plane. So using these modeled 100-year flood extents, we were able to inform ourselves of where the areas of highest risk are, the areas where you need basins. And those red stars that you see are the three basin locations that were selected for concept design for this study. In addition to those concept designs, there are also 12 yellow circles with the black dot in the middle, those are culvert crossings. We did concept designs for large culverts there, large enough to allow the debris to pass through under the road, so that those roads can stay open during a storm. Currently, most of those are low-water crossings, so a culvert would be very helpful in allowing access to emergency services. Another part of this project, we selected five dams from the original storm water master plan. They were shown in green triangles a few slides back, and we redesigned them as basins. So the reason we did that, basins, for one, are simpler, they're simpler to permit, they're simpler to certify, you don't have the issue of a large dam with water, you know, at higher elevations, you dig out a basin, the water level is lower, you can see in the figure in the center, the lower center area of this slide. And now, because the water is contained at a lower elevation, basins are safer, they're also similar in price, and they're subdivisible. So instead of building one large dam, you could build multiple basins and tackle them one at a time as funding permits. You can see the location of the five basins we redesigned in the lower part of this figure, in addition to the three new basins that we did concept designs for in the Montana Sector. So I'm going to step through each of these ones individually, I'll try to be brief and quick. First off, SSA 3, which is in the lower Rio Grande Valley, near Sparks. The original 2010 plan had a big dam, but this watershed has now been partially mitigated, partially controlled with a basin up in the blackout line in the top part of the figure. So now we've conceived a new basin in the green outline, the 2020 location. So the modeled extent, the blue area, is the 1% annual chance flood extents, the area that would be mitigated and benefited by construction of this basin. And at the lower end of the figure, and all of these figures are going to have the same symbology, we have yellow dots where houses, you know, structures are benefited by this project, and they're labeled as buyouts, because as an alternative to constructing this basin, of course, you could simply buy out all the houses that are impacted. And at the end of this presentation, we're going to have a table comparing these cost of the basin versus the cost of buyouts, to give you an idea of what the benefit is of the basin. You can see in this particular case, the 2020 estimate is almost identical to the value of buying outs of the houses. SSA 4, the original concept here again was a dam, the red line up there in the top-right corner of the figure. We've redesigned it as three basins, and we're aware that Rojas Avenue, there is an extension going on currently, which might impact these designs or how and the order in which they're tackled. We're also aware that City of Socorro is creating a basin. Just, it's difficult to see in this figure, it says current excavation activity by the City of Socorro with the black dotted outline, that's currently ongoing. They started that after we started this study. But it's something that also would affect the order in which you would want to tackle these basins. HAC 1, two existing basins, rather than digging a channel out to this, Arroyo, this has been changed to an expansion of those basins. HAC 2, originally a dam, now two basins. In this case, there's a potential increase, you know, significant increase in cost associated with doing basins instead of a dam. And then, this is the first basin in the Montana Sector. This one in particular is a special case because that green square is on Fort Bliss land, so it might require coordination with the Army to see what, you know, whether they would allow us to build a basin there. It could also be moved into the county if desired, but it's more convenient out there, potentially, if an agreement can be reached with the Army Corps. MON 2, another basin. In this case, you know, the basin cost is significantly less than what the cost of buyouts would be. Very beneficial project. And then the big one, MON 3, the cost for this one is astronomical, 70 million, but there are a very large number of structures benefited by it, almost 70 million worth, if you wanted to buy those out. This is one that might be revisited in phase 2, because, just because of the nature of the topography, a dam would actually be a lot cheaper here than a basin. So, moving along, project comparison, how do you decide which of these projects are more beneficial than others, which ones rise higher than the others on the list? There was a prioritization done, but with the benefit-cost analysis, the intent here was to find a way to rank these projects that's quantitative, accurate, and simple, something that's impartial. This wouldn't be the prioritization, a prioritization is what the county comes up with, but this is a way to compare projects in a way that is quantitative, technically based. So benefit-cost analysis, it's very simple, you compare the benefits versus the costs, types of benefits, might include benefits to reduce flooding at structures, reduce flooding at roadways, schools, agricultural land, reduced volunteer costs even, all these things are considered by FEMA in typical benefit-cost analysis, reduced lost productivity, et cetera. And then, the cost is very simple, cost of construction, cost of maintenance. And the ratio, the benefit-cost ratio, BCR, is benefits divided by the cost. To do a full benefit-cost analysis, it's a laborious process, it could take a lot of time, and there are a lot of projects here on this list, but one piece of low-hanging fruit in this case was, we understand the benefits to structures, we've identified them, we know what the depth of flooding is under existing conditions, so for this benefit-cost analysis, for this study, we've decided to focus just on structures, but keep in mind that there are other benefits that aren't included here, so the benefits might look a little lower than what they would be if a full benefit-cost analysis was done. These are list assumptions, I won't go into this in great detail. Some of these might be revisited in more detail later, but these are assumptions that were come up with by the county to be used in this simple benefit-cost analysis. So without further ado, here's the final table of projects listed, ranked in order, descending order of benefit-cost ratio. So we have the cost estimate, second column, the third column is the annualized cost estimate. So you take a, you annualize the cost of what would it be to construct that using a certain discount rate in 50 years, project life, what would be the annual cost, and then what are the annualized benefits, which is the summation of, it's the present worth of all the benefits of all the houses. The benefit-cost ratio is the one divided by the other. These are all, you know, as you can see, the benefits are lower than the cost estimates, that's not unusual, that's common. But in this way, you can see which ones have the most benefit to cost. And just for optional alternative purposes, I have the buyout prices listed on the right. There's two different columns, depending on whether you want to buy out all the houses, where water is going over the finished floor, or if you want to buy out additional houses to keep one foot of freeboard. So this is a table that's going to go into the final, the new updated storm water master plan to help the county in your decision process. And so, next steps, phase 2. As you saw, that table only included the projects from phase 1, but our intent is to give the county a comprehensive list of all projects prioritized, then you can make your own decisions of which ones are more important to the county. And in addition, phase 2 is going to include a couple more concept designs, one down in Fabin's, and then potentially updating that one that's in the Montana Sector. Here's the project schedule timeline. We intend to have the final updated storm water master plan done by the end of March. We will have another presentation for you at that time, in addition to another public meeting. So with that, I'll open up to questions. Does anyone have any questions?
Commissioner Perez?
You mentioned that the City of Socorro started one project, I guess, after you all had initiated the study, I guess, so what extent is there coordination with the city regarding this study, or have there been any meetings with the City of Socorro in particular regarding that potential coordination? I think we've thrown out the idea of, you know, as we've looked at regional transit, of establishing perhaps, you know, some entity, you know, with the various governments, the county and the municipalities, and perhaps establishing some sort of local government corporation to help pay for these projects. I guess I just want to, I'm just curious as to the coordination with, since this affects various areas and municipalities and overlapping governments?
We've, they've shared some, we've been in coordination with the city's engineering consultant, Danenbaum Engineering, who shared some real basic information about the project. In phase 2, where we were actually just discussing this morning about the possibility of looking at this project specifically, because there is development upstream along the proposed location of those three basins, that may include some future roadway construction, and as a result of that and land development that's already occurring up there, some of that water may actually be captured upstream, and because some of the water is being captured downstream by the City of Socorro's project, the need for three basins may actually be, it may be different. And so, we'll be coordinating with the city to discuss what some of their work is, what the scope of, the exact scope of work of that project, and how many of those homes are being removed from the flood plain, so that way we can have a better estimate of what's necessary upstream. But this is, this was initiated, assuming that Socorro would do, have no activity on anything, and so this is the ultimate responsibility the county would have had if we wanted to address all this flooding in this area, but now, at this point, that may have changed. So we'll be coordinating with the city moving forward in phase 2.
And so when you talk about development, does it also involve the municipal utility districts as well, I guess, and what they're capturing upstream?
Right, so just as an example, if the developer in this area off of Horizon and I-10 and Eastlake and I-10 has a master plan that's available on the website for the Mission Ridge community that they're building out, and so they've, there's a few subdivisions within the area where basins 1, 2, and 3 are located, where they actually already have a basin. So they would be responsible for capturing some of that flow within the property that they own, which then also affects whether or not, which affects some of the planning assumptions and some of the hydrological assumptions that need to be made for basins 1, 2, and 3. So we will be coordinating closely with them also, but for the purposes of providing just a mere update on what SSA 4 would look like today, this was the cost, but there's a number of projects that were initially identified in 2010 that are really no longer necessary, because so much of the need for that storm water hazard mitigation has gone away because of the development north of I-10. But we'll be coordinating a little closely with this one specifically, because this project is greatly affected by the land development patterns to the north and then the City of Socorro's project to the south.
I mean, and I guess, would it be, I don't, I mean, obviously, you all are the experts on this, but I mean, is it possible to identify, let's say, if the municipal utility districts are constructing certain basins in certain areas, where it may be advantageous to create a larger basin, you know, is there the potential to partner with them, since they're already building that, perhaps maybe it requires additional land, and they'd probably want additional compensation for that, but since they're already going to that trouble, I mean, would there be opportunities for us to, you know, leverage some of our storm water funding to augment what they're already doing in the municipal utility districts?
Yes, and actually, we had aimed to have a meeting with representatives from the developer this morning, but there was some last-minute scheduling conflicts that we weren't able to meet, but we do want to have those conversations, because there is significant potential for public-private participation, for a public-private partnership, excuse me, to be developed between the county and the landowner in the area, who would just, exactly as you said, Commissioner, potentially maybe just donate additional right-of-way for the purposes of the pond and then have the pond or the basin oversized? So instead of having the subdivision have one pond, one size, and then the county build one right next to it, it would just be one large pond that perhaps the municipal utility district would agree to maintain. But we, those logistics and those details could be coordinated, but we will be having that conversation with the developer for this project specifically, for this set of projects specifically.
Okay. Can you just keep me updated on that, on how that goes?
Of course.
Because I mean, I see it as a significant opportunity to, I mean, if they're already, like I said, it's, it's a good way to just leverage our funding and just maximize it to the extent possible. And, and since, you know, all that construction is already going on out there, and they're building this type of infrastructure, you know, maybe we can just, you know, help enlarge some of it, so it...
And we've had great success doing that with our roadways in the area, and so, I believe that we have the same opportunity here.
Thank you.
And then you just want to point out that on these figures, the purple-blue shaded area is what is, what A E Com has identified as the likely one percent event floodplain, or the one hundred-year storm floodplain. So, as, as Mr. Kimball mentioned, our flood maps have not been updated since 1991. FEMA was recently working on updating them and is still ongoing with that process. But the floodplains have grown significantly. And so, the projects here, the buyout properties, those yellow dots within that blue plain are all homes that without the structure being constructed, would actually be required to purchase flood insurance. And so, the financial impact to those homes across the entire county would be very significant. Some of the flood insurance can, depending on the mortgage values and the property values of some of these properties, may double their annual mortgage payment, their monthly mortgage payments in some, in some cases. So, the importance of the structures in determining a path moving forward is one of the reasons why we asked A E Com to help us identify a buyout scenario. Is it more economical to, to mitigate risk by providing relocation assistance and taking people out of the floodplain? Or is it, does it make more financial sense to construct the facilities, the dams, the basins, to take them out of the floodplain?
Jose, what's been the community engagement? This is really incredible, a lot of expectations. How are you reaching out to let them know that these things are coming up?
So, we've had, we've had one public meeting up in the, East Montana area, the neighborhood association there, the president and secretary of one of the neighborhood associations that community attended. And we shared, we shared maps with them, and they were going to provide feedback to us. They're going to distribute those maps to their membership for that input. This morning concurrently, we had a public meeting in the commissioner's court suite, as you all likely saw. So, we've, we invited the municipalities to, to come out. And then the third meeting will host in the northwest portion of the county, because that'll be the study area at that point. And so, similarly, we'll reach out to the municipalities in that area as well. But we have had a little bit of a challenge getting public input on some of these projects. So, we've, I think that's been a challenge for us, is, is getting people to come and provide input on what's necessary. But we have been coordinating as much as we can with the partner agencies from an agency-to-agency perspective, similar like the city of Socorro, the, the, the landowners and developers in those areas. So, we have been doing as much as we can on that end, but in terms of public input, it has been a little challenging.
Commissioner Perez?
To that point, I mean, I don't know if we have funding set aside for, for notifications, because honestly, I still think that mailouts are, are the best way to get, I mean, we've seen that with some transportation meetings as of past, as you well know, that we've had the best success in notifying folks through that. I mean, I don't know if we've set aside funding for that in the budget, but I know it is difficult to get ahold of folks in, in, in some of these areas, but making sure that at least everybody gets notified or some sort of postcard or something may, may, may help.
We can, we can look at what's available in the budget, and then we can come back in the, at the beginning of the year and see what, what may be a path moving forward, bring that before the court, for the court's consideration.
I think it's not only the, the impact, I think the whole community, the whole county, a lot of people see that as something that was very important, that we should be working on. And so, also letting the, the county in, in general sort of understand where you're at and what the master plan. And Gardena spoke this morning earlier about the first phase is that they get a little bit of a hope, that there's something being done, and that's always very encouraging. So, I, I think if we could, you know, do as much as we can, allow people to know that there's, you know, a lot of things taking place to, to arrive at something that's been a, a huge, sort of a little bit of a black mark for, for our county of not addressing some of these issues. So, a lot of great things happening, and I think people should know about it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Judge. Commissioner Robinson?
So, thank you. So, Phase One did not, fundamentally did not include the northwest region?
No, Phase Two will.
Phase Two will?
Phase Two will include the northwest region, as well as Fabin's and Torneo. The, the priority is given to Phase One, because there's been significant development in this area, and that's actually reduced the number of projects necessary here. But Phase Two will include the area that was actually under consideration by the court to engage the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers on that northwest feasibility study, which will address the streams forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, and forty-six that affect Westway, parts of Gannatio, and, and other areas. And then similarly, another developer in that area has also expressed an interest in wanting to coordinate with the county because of their development plans, and we'll be working closely with El Paso Water on that, because El Paso Water does own a large majority of property in that study area. But Phase Two will be kicked off in the next, we anticipate, beginning of the next year, so we can have those. And then we'll have a similar presentation to the commissioner's court on the Phase Two projects that will include the northwest portion of the county and the Fabin's and the Torneo areas.
Okay. Thank you.
Great.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge Commissioner.
Great job. Thank you. Thank your team for us.
Item number twenty-one, approve and accept the revision of Burbidge Acres, to be named Burbidge Acres Replant J. Pursuant to requirements, the Texas Local Government Code, Section 232.041, revision of plat, and authorize the filing and recording of the subdivision plat.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Gilbert Saldana with Planning and Development.
Good morning.
Burbidge Acres Replant J is a four-lot subdivision, approximately an acre on Burbidge Road, which is located approximately a thousand feet northeast of Alameda Avenue. The subject property is in precinct number three in the Clint area, and will be served with water and sewer by Lower Valley Water District. Each lot in the subdivision will be subject to onsite ponding. The property owner, Mr. Miguel A. Hernandez, is requesting to replat the property, to replat the property into four different lots. No deed or covenant restrictions were found to be filed with the county. This exhibit shows the subject property in the original plat, which is Burbidge Acres, and it was filed in nineteen seventy-four. This exhibit shows the proposed replat of the subject property, with each lot equalling or exceeding ten thousand square feet in, in area. The Planning and Development Department recommends approval of Burbidge Acres Replant J and authorize the filing and recording of the subdivision plat. This concludes my presentation. And answer any questions you may have.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-two, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the interlocal agreement with the Camino Real Regional Mobility Authority for the procurement and placement of bus shelters for the El Paso County Transit in an amount not to exceed three hundred and thirty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. Effective the date of signature for a three-year term. Funding is available in C I P twenty Public Works Administration Improvements, A D A. Contract number two thousand nineteen zero nine six two.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. So, Salderos, the Planning and Development Department. This item is to fund the construction of four A D A compliant bus shelters along our county transit routes. This funding was provided for in the fiscal year twenty C I P allocation. The agreement is to allow the R M A to engage in the design and construction of these facilities. The design work is needed as, to ensure that there are, any site issues are addressed in terms of construction of A D A compliant ramps, concrete sidewalks, and then the actual installation of the bus shelter itself. The county is currently evaluating the best placement of these routes. We have contracted the Texas A and M Transportation Institute, or T T I, to conduct a route planning study that are, they're analyzing how effective our routes are and any modifications that should be made. Additionally, they're also conducting a bus stop shelter analysis that will actually tell us where the places along our routes that are in need of bus stops and bus shelters should be. And so, we anticipate that work being completed in January. We did want to ensure that we hand this agreement in place with the R M A, so once that study by T T I is complete, we will know where, exactly where the routes, where the bus shelters should be placed, and then we can ask the R M A to begin the design work on installing these. So, with that, we ask the court's favorable consideration. Happy to take any questions.
Jose, with this amount of funding, how many are we anticipating?
We're anticipating four at the minimum. Depending on how complex the site may be, there may be a potential for there, that number to increase, but at a minimum, we can, we can safely say that we should be able to install four.
Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-three, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Transportation Services Agreement with First Transit Incorporated for the management of the Rural Transit Fixed Route Commuter Bus Program from January first, two thousand twenty, through August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Funding is available in Rural Transit Assistance Fed twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen and Rural Transit Assistance Program State twenty twenty grants. Contract number two thousand nineteen zero nine three six.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. So, Salderos, the Planning and Development Department. This item before you is to sign the contract for the management of the county's fixed commuter transit service with, to First Transit Incorporated. As the court is aware, a few weeks ago, the bid was awarded to First Transit. We were diligently over the past few weeks with the county attorneys to get this contract ready for commissioner's court before the end of the year, because we are on a month-to-month agreement with First Transit, as they are the incumbent provider of service, and that agreement expires at the end of December. So, with the court's favorable consideration, the day will ensure that there's no interruption in service.
Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-four, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the contract for comprehensive parks and recreation master plan services with Half Associates Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars. Funding is available in General Fund, General Administrative, Contract Services General. Contract number two thousand nineteen zero eight eight two.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. We're almost getting ready to start with our master planning. We have Half Associates, which is a very well-known firm in Southwest, all the way from, from Las Cruces to Fort Worth, Dallas, areas around Austin. They've done county cities, they do architectural planning, parks, roads, public works. And they've put together an amazing team. They're Southwest, but Prose Consulting, who's also part of their team for this project, is really one of our leaders in the, in the industry and has done master plans across all of the United States. And then they're also using Gaynor Planning locally to do some, some local input for the communities, putting together some community engagement meetings, and they're using U T C to do some bilingual survey. So, I think we're gonna have a world-class Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And we look forward to you, everybody's input, including the community, and especially the community, and where we go for the Parks and Recreation Department for the county of El Paso in the next ten to fifteen years.
What's the timeline?
Within a year is per our contract. We can extend it or get it done before, but we're...
It has, it has to be done within a year?
It's within a year.
Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Veronica, thank you.
Item number twenty-five, grant applications. Approve the submission of county grant applications as listed and described. If awarded, all grant award agreements will be brought back to the commissioner's court for final acceptance and approval. Item number twenty-five, approve and authorize the constable's office, precinct one, to apply for Walmart Incorporated's local community grant program in the amount of four thousand three hundred dollars to purchase two ballistic shields to be utilized for safety purposes and emergency response. No county match required. Contract number two thousand nineteen zero nine seven four.
Good morning, Commissioners. Constable Precinct One. I'm here requesting permission to apply for the Walmart Community Grant. I was able to identify another store that still had some funds available this fiscal year, so I'm requesting for four thousand three hundred, which we can purchase two additional ballistic vests. I know we were here last week on another one. And my goal is to equip every constable unit with a ballistic shield. And for this grant, no match is required.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great job, Constable. Thank you.
Item number twenty-six, approve and authorize the constable's office, precinct one, to apply to the Texas Department of Transportation general grant in the amount of twenty-two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars and ten cents with a required match of four thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and two cents. The grant period will be from October first, two thousand twenty, through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Contract number two thousand nineteen zero nine seven nine.
Good morning, Commissioners. County Judge, Constable Precinct One. For this general grant, I'm looking to apply to buy car seats. Currently, my office has two car seat technicians, and we have been helping text out throughout the community on education campaigns. You know, currently, three out of four car seats are not properly installed. So, throughout the county, we do these education campaigns. With this general grant, I would be able to purchase seventy-five car seats, transportation trailer, some tents, tables, and we can have our own education campaigns. When we've been doing these campaigns, we haven't really addressed the west side, which is my, my district. So, I would like this opportunity to host my own events and concentrate in the west side area that doesn't have like Vinton, Westway. When we've been out there doing these events this past year, they were mostly focused in central and the east side area. As far as the funding, the twenty percent match, grants did reach out to budget. There will be funding available in twenty twenty-one for that match. However, we're gonna try to cover that with, with salaries, education, the fleet, and the use of the vehicles.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Constable.
Thank you.
Great initiatives.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-seven, approve and authorize El Paso County Sheriff's Office to apply for the Texas Department of Transportation Comprehensive Step Traffic Enforcement Grant in partnership with the Constable's Office in the amount of seventy thousand dollars with a required twenty percent match in the amount of fourteen thousand dollars from October first, two thousand twenty, through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Contract number two thousand nineteen zero nine eight one.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Good morning.
Paul Soria with the El Paso County Sheriff's Office. I'm here today to ask permission to apply for the step and the comprehensive grants for next year, October, to the following year, September of two thousand twenty-one.
And Sergeant, just for the public's information, step covers what?
That would be five areas, sir. Seatbelt, speed, intersection, and I have them written down, the other two, D W I and distracted driving.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 28, approve and authorize the El Paso County Sheriff's Office to apply for the Texas Department of Transportation STEP Grant application for the traffic enforcement of commercial motor vehicles in the amount of $40,000 with a required 20% match of $8,000 from October 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2021. Contract number 2019-0980.
Judge Commissioners, I apologize. Pretty much the same grant, but this one is for the commercial vehicles.
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Sorry about that.
Motion carries. Item number 29, Budget and Finance. Approve Amendment Number 9 to the County of El Paso's 2019-2020 Operating Budget. This budgetary amendment will increase grants by $260,452, thus increasing the overall budget of $473,312,069.66 to $473,572,470.18.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. The details for this week's budget amendment were sent to you with our weekly highlight. Were there any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries. This brings us to item number 30, Executive Session. Commissioners' Court will now recess into Executive Session to discuss items 30A through 30D pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071, 551.072, and 551.073. Commissioners' Court will reconvene to take official action.
All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 24th through Wednesday, December 25th in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019. Come and celebrate the holiday tradition of Lights on the Lake at Ascot Park. The lights will be up the entire month of December until January 6th beginning from 6:00 PM and will be lit up seven days a week. Follow us on Facebook at El Paso County Parks and Recreation for upcoming special holiday events happening at Lights on the Lake. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 31st through Wednesday, January 1st in observance of the Christmas holiday. All county offices will reopen on Thursday, December 26, 2019.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item #32, discuss and take appropriate action to designate and authorize the El Paso County Judge or County Chief Administrator to sign any offer to purchase real property located within Campbell addition downtown area city of El Paso, Texas, and further to authorize the County Auditor to issue County funds to the property owner or escrow account in the amount of the negotiated option contract consideration and earnest money amount.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item #32, discuss and take appropriate action to designate and authorize the El Paso County Judge or County Chief Administrator to sign any offer to purchase real property located within Campbell addition downtown area city of El Paso, Texas, and further to authorize the County Auditor to issue County funds to the property owner or escrow account in the amount of the negotiated option contract consideration and earnest money amount.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item #32, discuss and take appropriate action to designate and authorize the El Paso County Judge or County Chief Administrator to sign any offer to purchase real property located within Campbell addition downtown area city of El Paso, Texas, and further to authorize the County Auditor to issue County funds to the property owner or escrow account in the amount of the negotiated option contract consideration and earnest money amount.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item #32, discuss and take appropriate action to designate and authorize the El Paso County Judge or County Chief Administrator to sign any offer to purchase real property located within Campbell addition downtown area city of El Paso, Texas, and further to authorize the County Auditor to issue County funds to the property owner or escrow account in the amount of the negotiated option contract consideration and earnest money amount.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was our last item Judge.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
This concludes today's meeting at 12:41 PM.